Father God, we look to you today and we're thankful for your blessings. You've showered upon our community and we just ask for your providence as we go forward. We're thankful for our community and we just pray for those that wear a badge and a uniform and keep us safe, watch over them and protect them. Be with us in today's meeting and direct us further on with great praise. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting November 7th and we'll start with the minutes we're sent via email, any corrections?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, on paper.
Aye.
We have two payrolls during the last timeframe, which is weeks payroll period 22 and 23. First one is $210,928.33. The second one is $211,316.93. We had 273 total claims totaling $511,400.59.
Motion to approve payroll and claims.
Seconds.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero. First up is Mike.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have 88 inmates, three are DOC and 26 are F6 DOC. So you know on our chiller they have started to prep work.
Okay.
For the pad for it last week.
Had good weather for it.
Yes. Hope it stays that way for a while.
You don't want to have to try it out right away.
No. Okay, that's all right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ed?
Mine's going to be short when I have to have a date. It's getting better, Ed. It's just a time of year.
Okay, thanks.
Mine's basically just some updates. Center line striping, we finally did get done with them. They worked a lot of side rays for us. They were doing other stuff during the week and all that stuff, but that's just the highlight of what we did as far as 96 miles, 16 river crossings and the arrows at Norwell. Roadside mowing, we got that all done last week. Tractors cleaned up. We are actually, we store them at the 4H park, so we're moving them down there today to store there so we have room in the north building. So, and the other stuff, this is the other stuff we're doing. As far as the oil truck, we're going to get rid of the oil we have left today, so we'll get it cleaned up and put away. So, that's all I have.
Wow, that's cool. That's cool.
I told you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Ed.
Nate? Can you top that?
No.
Not even trying.
Double, drop the fuck down to eight points.
Permit a microscope.
Hand that one out. Updates on right-of-way dedications. We've got no new documents on Bridge 2 and 203, but I'll come back to Bridge 203 later on here. County of 500 South, we're still sitting with eight of the 12 complete. 500 West, four of nine parcels we have recorded. The Chester 1564, which would be Bridge 400 on 100 West, all three have submitted their right-of-ways now. At the last meeting we hadn't received any, now I have all three, so we can actually proceed with accepting those and recording those, so we can move forward on that project. Also, one of the projects we're looking into for conversions into the future was brought up as county road 900 West section, I believe. It's a little half-mile section, number of residents. There are numerous property owners on that, on that section of the road. I have all but one already, so that kind of expresses the interest that we have.
That's great.
And I think the property owner we don't have doesn't front on the road. So they are on the road, but they don't front on that road. So they may need to be contacted to see if they'd be willing to sign off and then we'd have all for that road already. So that's a good sign. We'll continue to do that and find road sections where everybody's on board with moving forward the projects. Updates on the Chester 1564, I'll probably in the future just call it Bridge 400 because that's what it's going to be. We can move forward on the box, call it. I have the quote for the aluminum box from CivilCon along with their terms and services and I've got quotes for installation. I put a little summary on your sheet here. Installation, the quote I've received, the low quote was from Rick Ramsier, excavating ink for $6,500. The aluminum box itself with the shell, the inverted tow wall and delivery $50,831.66. And I'd like to set aside from that an additional $10,000 because we're going to need to essentially build up the road there. So we're going to have to purchase stone. We're going to try to provide all of the materials so that Rick's essentially just installation. So that'd be this, stone, any tile, so it'd be miscellaneous, things that we find once we start to dig into the project. And here are the two quotes along with their conditions. I'm going to get a signature on that to have CivilCon proceed with that work. I'm hoping to try to get this started within the next two weeks, depending on the manufacturing and the delivery of that box. Sooner we can get that done, the sooner I can get the road opened up again.
Okay. Motion to approve the CivilCon quote and Ramsier excavating quote for the total, do we want a total project approval?
If we can and then...
The amount of $67,331 and $66 cents.
Seconds.
And do you want all of our signature?
I only need one.
To be signed by the president.
Good, second.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero.
All right. Next piece here, I have the contract for design services for Bridge 18. It's one of the projects we're looking at for not construction next year, but for bidding next year for construction in 2018, similar to what we had done for ANZ. Total contract amount was $30,21,300.
Motion approved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Have that required signature for some place?
Yes, I should have put a marker on that, sorry. It's kind of buried in there.
Go to Bridge 79.
Bridge 79. Contractor's actually ready to start on the work, so I need to send them a notice to proceed. I've met with Dean Kinder from PRIMCO on the project. We've awarded the contract, but we need to essentially accept the contract start date and effectively set when the finished date is. I have copies of the notice to proceed. We're going to bump back to that again because we have utility relocates, we want to talk about that as well. There's multiple copies of that there for signatures and it just needs, Blake just needs to sign that one.
That's notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed, so they will...
Motion approved.
There's been some work that people have seen out there already.
Need four signed.
Yep. Beth can keep one and I'll take one and I'll send one off to the contractor.
Is there utilities that we have to deal with?
There is.
Kevin's got the motion.
I'll jump ahead a little bit on that.
Second, I'm sorry.
I've been working with AEP on that. They're actually going to place a new pole, move their overhead lines from the north side of the road to the south side of the road, which would be on the same side as the buried telephone. I actually have an application from Citizens Telephone for boring for them to relocate a line as part of our project. So we can actually, I'd like to have signature on this. This would be their relocation point.
Everyone or just?
Just Citizens Telephone.
I mean, him to sign?
I believe we...
All three.
We have all three signed for those.
Motion to approve Citizens Telephone request.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
All right. I also have, this kind of goes to a bigger issue on right-of-ways. Initially, as you noticed, we had for right-of-way dedications for Bridge 2 and 203, we requested right-of-ways on Bridge 203 and in my knowledge, that road 1,000 South, which is where Bridge 203 is, was an old state road. It was a state road from about 1940, 1941 up till about 1971, when it was turned over to the county, relinquished back to the county. So I have letters, copies of letters that I sent back to the property owners for each of you, just kind of documenting our position on that. So I've got actually one for Roy and Kevin. We'd initially requested from the property owners a 60-foot right-of-way.
So you should already have that.
According to the state records, we already have that.
Okay.
From the records we have. Talking to Roy about that.
We have or we think we have.
Confidence? So, it's something that we want to try to pursue going through all these state roads, like 300 West. We're going to want to do some real document research into this because it kind of raises a question for us, that what they said they gave us, did they have the right to give it to us? Did they actually acquire it correctly? Any future relinquishments, we're going to have to be very proactive about it. Just because they say they gave it to us, here's the road, well, there may be issues that they're wrong with that, that we're unaware of. So we're going to probably want to do future research into this. If there's issues, we'll essentially identify them individually as they go, but the history is here, this shows the 60-foot right-of-way. On the record documents that I have of the roads prior to the construction back in 41, there's evidence of the parcels and the, what do you use? The deed records from some of the little corner cuts provided way. I guess I'm going to look for Roy here, is appropriate terms for it.
You don't have copies of the documentation?
Correct, and the individual parcels of the transfer.
No, I went to the courthouse Friday.
I didn't bring it, yeah.
Well, they know because I sent it to them and so they're, first I looked in, I was looking in the records, 41, 42, around in that era, and I looked at miscellaneous first and they weren't miscellaneous, so I looked in deeds and they were in deeds. So, but there were three different state highway projects. One was State Road 224, whatever that is. One was 318 and another one was 303.
Okay. We're all constructed with the same similar.
And so I limited my focus to the three, to the 218, 318. And so I wrote them down and then I had, asked Carolyn Burks to make copies. So she made copies and I took them back and tried to figure out, well, what parcel is this? So we're talking about documents signed by presumably the owners of the property in the 40s and I'm looking at a 2016 GIS records to try to, try to figure out what the parcel was then. But my concern is that beyond the immediate need for this bridge or whatever, that if these rights-of-way documents to the state, granted to the state a wider right-of-way, which is now a county highway, we should document that and update, Nate's got a right-of-way bible or whatever, that is the first resource to look through to see, to find the basis for the highway right-of-way because you just didn't have one date and time when all these rights-of-way to the county were done. For another project, I looked and I'm going back to like 1917, the property owners could petition to the commissioners to improve this highway right-of-way. And so the procedure then apparently was they'd appoint appraisers and they'd come back with a report and they'd apportion the expenses. So, you know, it's like making a pizza. The right-of-way, who knows at one point in time, but now that we're concerned about this and, you know, it could be the next project where you're doing a conversion or something and it would be nice for the county to know just what exactly the extent of its right-of-way is. And I'm probably not the best person to be paying to run those records.
It'd be good to do quite a bit of this because what we found and part of the reason for the confusion, and so I'll take credit of mine for that, is that the right-of-way, the right-of-way book that we have was only looking at internal county records, not state records, transfer back over to the county. And so when that was brought up, I started looking at other records and found the transfer documents of when that happened. But when that transfer happened, it's like, here's the road and we said, yes, that's essentially all that was done back in 71, we just agreed to take it. So there really wasn't a lot of appraisals done internally, at least from what my documents show. So it's something to look into and we may want to spend some effort and some time essentially assembling or making a project of that. Excuse me. So, but that letter was what was sent out to the property owners essentially.
And how many property owners are against 203, 4, 5?
There's only like four property owners.
Three?
Three parcels.
And there's, and there's no, there's nothing wrong or nothing's going to hurt by them signing a new document.
Correct. Essentially, it just, so we did have one property owner that had signed prior to this letter going out. It really just defends our position to that right-of-way. So we could go through and have everybody re-record over that and that doesn't really create a conflict. So, jumping back to item seven here, our national bridge inspection report for 2017, 2020, you have the letters of interest from different zone firms that's procured through NDOT. So once I have your score sheets, I'll assemble those scores, turn that record information over to NDOT and then they'll respond back to us as far as the ability for us to negotiate with the selected firm. So just once you're done, get those back to me. Then the last item, a civil engineering professional development seminar, I will be at Purdue University November 17th for a one-day session. So, and that is all I have. That's short for me, right?
That's good.
Got a lot done though.
There you go. Lots of good things.
Things for us to sign.
We'll make a motion to do these all at the end.
Correct, yeah, just sign those at the end.
I'm going to accept the right-of-way and sign off on them at the end of today's meeting.
Thank you.
On paper?
I just got a signature page, not the rest of the documents on one.
Which one was that, in the center or is that?
Jake Lewis.
All right, we'll have to print the front.
Oh, you can print it out, I'm just wondering if you...
I didn't have that one with me, sorry.
I mean, that's what you brought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all he gave us back.
Okay.
I remembered the third one, I didn't realize that that one was just a signature.
Okay.
All right, we'll have to correct that, I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks, thanks. Bonnie, you are, that's his next one that he's ended.
Good morning.
Morning.
I know that by the end of the year, it's getting a little bit difficult to read some of these charts, but at least with our graphs, it helps you a little bit see visually how we're performing. So my first chart that I'm going to start with is our annual comparison. Last year through the end of 2015, we actually provided through our transportation system, WOW, 43,704 trips. And so far through the end of October, we're at 36,139 trips. So that kind of puts it in perspective for the previous years. If we go January to October for each year, we're within 1% of last year. Last year we were at 36,581 trips by the end of October. Again, this year we're at the 36,139, so it's within 1% difference. We did have some mandatory training through NDOT and RTAP that we did in the month of October so that pretty much shut us down for a day. I mean, we did a couple of trips in the morning, a few in the after, late afternoon, but for the rest of the day, my drivers were all in training, so that accounts for some of that. And then we have some changes in our dynamics of, we've lost a few FMC dialysis patients and our school trips are changed up a little bit this year. But I'm still confident that we're going to at least reach or if not exceed last year's numbers as we've done in the past. Monthly trip comparisons, I love this enough, it's a little hard to see. We averaged in 2015, 3,642 trips per month and in October, we actually provided 3,596, so really close to the average of last year. But in March, we had a record-setting 4,047 trips in the month of March of 2016. So in the colder months, we do a lot more trips. People are not walking, riding their bikes, that type of thing. Trips per business day, we averaged in 2015, 173 trips per business day. Our highest was at 186 in February 2016 and in October, we were at 171. So this middle chart I find interesting, it kind of shows you the breakout by age group. Adults, that's 18 to 59 years old age are at 47%. They're our highest ridership. Seniors 60 and older are at 35%. Students, which are K through 12, are at 14% and our infants have been holding pretty steady the last, what, four, five, six months, at 4%. And then they used to be the 1 to 2% of our ridership and now they're up to 4%. That's what I have on my chart. Somebody have any questions about the statistical information?
And that represents 1,053 Wells County riders.
So far?
Yeah, so far.
Through October. I did have a few, what I like to call interesting transit facts that I'd like to share. I just went to our annual NDOT meeting a month ago and public transit, of course, this is all-inclusive of public transit in Indiana, not just our system obviously, is a $40 million industry throughout Indiana and it's provided 36 million trips in Indiana alone, public transit has. If you look at rural demand response, which is the category that we fall under, we, it's at 13.5 miles for total vehicle miles that have been traveled, 13.5 million, sorry, 13.5 million total vehicle miles rural trend demand response systems have provided at, it was 100, or 1.94 million trips. So I just thought that was interesting to share some statistics for the state of Indiana, not just for Wells County. So, any questions?
Well, more good news about our transit system. Every three years, the Indiana Department of Transportation, they hire an independent auditor to go into the different systems and thoroughly look at what it is that they're doing. We do have people in and out of our office all the time that are looking at our books and our transit systems and our policies and procedures, but this one, which is called compliance review, is really important to the federal transit authority and the Indiana Department of Transportation. And we are one of only two systems in the entire state that are deficiency-free. No findings. And this is a copy to share with you. And I can also send it to you for copy if you're interested. The highlight would be on the last page. They call us a premier system for the state of Indiana. Thank you.
Yeah, send it to each commissioner if you need a copy, that'd be great.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, and with that being said, today I have the contract to provide public transit in 2017 and...
Is it blue ink?
It's blue ink, you betcha. So I would like the commissioners to sign the contract so we can continue to proceed in 2017.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Motion approved. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Well, do we have a complete plan?
I do.
Oh, I have one too.
All right, we're ready. So we can work with...
We need to work on that.
Yeah.
I know.
And we'll move to our desk.
Thank you.
Oh, of course, I knew you were coming.
Thank you.
I purposely changed.
Here, over here.
Smooth, isn't it?
All right, and then we have some claims with us. We just completed our third quarter of operation and let's see here. It was a total expense for the third quarter of $168,426 and this is a claim to the Indiana Department of Transportation for $106,011. That needs to be signed by county government. So that would be the third quarter. Also, I need to hear you have the second quarter signed because I didn't get it in there, a timeline matter, and I apologize for that.
Does the dollar amount for this calendar year have been equal to last year or are the dollar amounts different than what we have budgeted?
County government's contribution remains the same, however, Indiana Department of Transportation increased their dollar amounts.
Okay.
As long as our funding base doesn't change from county government, we'll continue to see an increase in funding to help cover the costs. But if we start seeing decreases, that's when state and federal NDOT starts pulling back.
Is this just for the president to sign?
Yes, it is. And...
There's two copies. Which arrow are we looking at?
Actually, both of them are signed.
Here?
And that one.
Yes, because of the amount there, yes.
Initials or anything or?
No.
Okay, so motion to accept and sign by the president, the Indiana Department of Transportation claims.
Second.
And that's the third quarter claim? That is the third.
For third quarter.
On paper?
Aye.
And you have the second quarter one as well, so... And that would be a total expense of $142,772,000 and of that, NDOT reimbursing about $124,757.
Okay, so motion for second quarter approval to be signed by the president.
Seconds.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And the same.
That's one.
Three?
I was complaining about it this morning because I didn't want to blow one, but I guess it worked out.
Then it's at the bed first. Then it's at the best.
Do we need a photocopy?
No, actually, I brought the nominations of the...
Yep. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The health insurance committee. Want to stay in the audience? You can come forward.
Just have Rick come up.
Just Rick and Lisa's good enough? Okay.
Tall and the short of it. Good tall and the short of it. Lisa, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
I apologize, I didn't get this to you guys earlier. I thought you were copied, but I gave it to you.
Oh.
Saturday.
Plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
So how do you want us to proceed here, Mr. Chairman? Do you want us to?
Bottom line.
Yeah, let's just go right to it.
Long story, I think we had six vendors presenting us 17 different products.
Correct.
We met everyone, I'm not sure exactly the date, but it was, everybody came through. We have 30-minute time slots and fulfilled everything. The committee narrowed it down to two different vendors.
With four products between?
With four different products and tried to make things a determination at that particular time. I was on vacation. I came back and we sat down for another meeting. And I'll let you guys take it from here, we just...
Well, at that point, when you came back, we had gone through all of these products and we made the recommendation to you that we stay with Anthem. Some of the reasoning, you know, is we would change network providers. And about 30% of our outpatient claims would be now considered out of network. And we don't see a reason that the employees would want to change their doctors. I think there was like 15% of the inpatient claims would have been considered out of network. So Anthem has treated us very well in the years that we've had them. And in fact, this year, they've came back with no increase at all. And that's almost a decrease in today's market.
If I understand, last year was zero.
Last year was minus.
Minus five. And the year before was zero, and then the year before, we had plus 11 or plus 14.
That was the first year that they came to us.
The first year. So that was, you know, it's kind of like fighting success, you know?
And one of the interesting things that we had happen that I've not seen before is two of the vendors that were unsuccessful said, you guys ought to stay where you're at.
That was a testimony.
And one of them was a self-funded presenter.
And that's part of the reason that we tried to do more this year, look at more options, was to make sure we're really getting the value that we needed for the taxpayers and for the county employees as well. So, you know, it's important, you always do a diligent job. It's a hard thing to sort through and so much information to look at. But we appreciate you taking the time and doing the extra to make sure that we're getting the best that we can get, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It takes an effort.
It takes, yeah.
Huge effort.
Just in my involvement, it's amazing what's involved, let alone the actual four people that were in this committee making...
Yeah, the makeup of the committee, there were two of us that had the coverage and two of us that didn't. So we felt we were getting a pretty good cross-section of the employees.
So that being said, if there's any other question for the committee, I want to take a motion.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations.
I'll second that.
Got a second?
On paper?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for diligence.
Takes a send of monthly reports, Beth?
Okay. Well, the first thing I had down here was any county farm updates. I know Roy did hand me the invoice to...
We, the property that you're considering selling, that's the portion, small portion, 16 some acres, maybe located east of County Home Road, has been surveyed. And we have asked Gary Shaw and Joe Wetrick to appraise the fair market value of the small portion you're considering selling, as well as the fair rental value of the remainder of the county home farm. And I asked, I sent Joe Wetrick a text, how's the appraisal coming? I'd like to give the commissioners an update at Monday's meeting. Said I met with Gary and we've discussed values. We've come up with a tentative value, but don't have it written up yet. We're to meet Monday again to finalize. So I anticipate getting their appraisal shortly.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think then in the meantime...
Just a motion, well, that's just private claim.
You had had some suggestions from the present tenant as to how to improve the lease, and some of you liked some ideas. So my recommendation would be to maybe concentrate on firming that up, what you want to see in a lease. And as you know, from my research, I think county council needs to be involved. So I need to get on their agenda and talk with them about what it is that you're considering doing.
Talk something against Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm going to be at the meeting. Is it appropriate for me to bring it up?
I don't know that I've, I don't know that we're on an agenda as far as an agenda item.
No, we could bring it up with other business if you want me to.
If you want to do that, I didn't know if you wanted it to have the appraisals and some numbers before you approached them. It's up to...
I'm not sure about that part.
Maybe not that part, maybe just the contract part.
Maybe just...
Of letting them know we're wasting...
Yeah, if they have input, they can get it back to us. My other thing is if there's repairs that have been neglected and that, you know, the tenant farmer hasn't made repairs, whether the county would put a dollar amount into...
I don't know if there's any incentive for a tenant on a two-year basis to be making any time.
Right, so maybe the county should say, we'll commit X dollars if there's repairs to drainage or something like that, to entice, you know, maybe a longer lease or something like that.
So you will be at the meeting to?
I'm planning on being Wednesday night.
Okay, so I'm just going to take a note on that, so you can explain that, that you're still working on a plan of what you're going to do as far as the next lease, so we don't have that information yet. So we'll discuss that again along the agenda. I'm just going to keep it on the agenda to keep updates on. Okay, I think I sent you the letter that I received from Wells County Chamber of Commerce regarding the lighting ceremony. They would like to do that again on Friday, November the 25th, at the courthouse approximately 6:20, and request that they have permission to do that at the courthouse square.
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Easy row.
Again, this year, we are asking if the commissioners would like to give permission to do the courthouse employee dinner, which would be on Wednesday, November the 23rd, from 12 to 2:00. And then also the courthouse Christmas party for December the 22nd. We'll be closing the courthouse at 2:00 for our Christmas party. So asking if you would like to approve that again this year.
Motion to approve both?
Seconds. On paper?
Aye.
Easy row.
It's all my county agenda, but I did send you... I've got so much stuff. The CEDAT Plan Amendment. Did you get a chance to look at that? And this amendment would be amending our current plan to transfer the $1 million to the rainy day fund. So the rainy day fund can be used for the local match on the community crossings, matching grant application for future years. But if we're going to do a transfer, this is the last year that the current statute allows us to do transfers from CEDAT because of the law changes that goes into effect on January the 1st. So we'd need to make this change. So the new CEDAT plan that I sent you would just show that one time, $1 million transfer for this year, for 2016, into the rainy day plan. So that way, it would be there for next year for Nate to be able to show for our match.
In essence, what that means, that money goes into that fund and we can match it and do twice the amount of projects for that $1 million. So we can, in essence, do $2 million for the projects to use that matching grant money. So that's a big responsibility.
I'll have two pages next week.
Double the money.
Right on.
A motion to approve that?
Second.
Sorry, you're concerned, Roy?
Yeah, I reviewed, made some changes.
Yes, Roy reviewed it and he's actually got it here for signatures, so.
On paper?
Aye.
Easy row.
Okay, the next thing I had here was regarding spec building. I think some emails have been going around. I'm just waiting on an invoice, so we're good on that for once.
Yes, Tony Croll wanted to know, well, he also asked if I was using an unsecured server for my email. I said, yeah, the commissioners haven't given me the key to the email access yet. So anyways, and Beth had talked to him, and the procedure is for him to, for them to submit an invoice, and he asked whether the commissioners have to do something on that again, and I said, not other than your usual due diligence on any other claim.
So once he sends it, so we should get it by the end, so it will be in your claim whenever it comes to your claims?
The next claim period.
For you to approve.
If he submits it by noon today.
Yeah, if he submits it by noon today, then it'll be paid at the November 21st claims. If not, then it would be the first Monday.
And I had given him those dates.
Yes, yes, given the dates, so.
And we're going to verify.
Yeah, we'll verify the total, you know.
Internally on our side to see if it comes out.
Beth, she's already calculated.
I mean, I calculated it, but I don't want to take my calculation. Well, actually, I do need the invoice for the claim.
Right, yeah.
You know, so. And we'll verify that we come with the same amount.
Perfect.
And get that taken care of. That. And the other thing, I think I sent you several emails regarding board appointments that's coming up for annual board appointments. So I do have that ready to be advertised.
Excellent.
You know, it'll be next week, I'll send it out this week, so it'll be in next week's paper for three days to put out all the advertisements we have for all the boards. I'm still waiting on one, I'm not, I got to get ahold of the family.
So everyone who is willing to participate and have their opportunity.
Yep, that will be going out next week.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Now, we got Mike here, that brought us a proposal from...
Can I do something before you forget?
Absolutely.
Accept the right-of-way?
I thought we did.
I thought you said we would do it at the end of the meeting.
I said we would.
Well, we made a motion to accept.
We made a motion to accept.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did the motion.
You've got me trained, fine.
All right, from the last meeting we had, you asked us to continue until Roy got a chance to look at the two amendments that the city of Lupton put forward in the ordinance thing. So that was, the two changes, we're changing the initial special exception term for an RV and an RV park for the extended stay designation from being three years to one year, and then taking out the pre-existing site designation so that any, any site that's picked by the DCA for a special exception must meet a 300-foot setback distance from a non, from a zoning district that does not allow for an RV park. So they took out the language for the 25-foot pre-existing definition, which... So we talked about following suit with what the city council had decided in that matter. You asked Roy to look at it, and we sent the stuff over and know if there's any...
Yes, I looked at it. I guess we have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On five, you've taken out an RV being a type 3 manufactured home?
Yes.
And, okay, I understand that. And then eight, I guess my question for you in terms of my reading of it is, we're dealing with recreational vehicles, and that's already been defined in the ordinance. So on page 88, 89, you've got the definition of a recreational vehicle.
Yep.
And then with respect to recreational vehicle, if it's in a recreational vehicle park...
Yes.
And that's also already defined in the ordinance. Then you've got a, you can, you can keep an RV in a recreational vehicle park for a period of time not exceeding eight months in a calendar year.
Yes.
Except then there's a special exception for a one year, and you can extend that for another year.
Yep.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And then two, if it's not in a RV park...
Yes.
Then if it's in a unincorporated area, you can keep it 90 days.
Yes.
With a special exception that has to do with if you're going to build a residence?
Yeah, or if there's a remodel or many of the different options that were stated there.
And then you've got an option, if you don't have a license, then it's going to convert to a manufactured home.
Yep.
Okay. Question I have is, say, Richard Robbins has a pickup camper.
Yep.
So it doesn't have to have a motor, that's, that's an RV.
Yep.
So if she doesn't keep it in a park, she can have it at her home, not exceeding 90 days?
These are all for occupied as residents, though. The 30 and 90 days are set up as for residential purpose, not for storage. That was one of the clear caveats, being one to make sure when drafting the ordinance is that we're not, we're not regulating where or when you can store an RV on your property. We're regulating when you use it for residence and how long in that manner.
So if it's in an RV park, it doesn't matter whether it's used for residential purposes or not?
Correct. In an RV park, it's assumed that's what it's being used for.
So that's for storage.
Yep. Yeah, inside an RV park, the RV physically can be in the RV park for eight months in a calendar year, or be incited inside one of the spaces designated for extended stays.
That's livable, correct? That's if they're living in it?
That's for any.
For residents or for...
In an RV park... In an RV park, in an RV park, you can take your RV and put it somewhere for eight months and come in and out, or stay there all eight months, whatever, that's covered in one part. And then if the site, or if the park itself designates some of the sites for extended stays, then that RV could stay there the entire time for, over that period of time for, measured as long as they continually, every year, designate those sites with the board of zoning affairs.
So if you've got an RV and you want to store it in an RV park, you've got one year and it could be extended, but after two years.
Yep.
Find another RV park.
Yep.
I'm going to go off on a little here a little bit. Why wouldn't you, I mean, because I'm an RV-er, I've done it all, but with those, but my question is, help me out, maybe I'm not saying it. If you have an RV that's parked on your property.
Yep.
And it's not having it, it's, it can sit there as long as you want.
Absolutely.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, under this ordinance.
Okay.
Yep.
And when it's in an RV park, then you fall under your zoning, but outside of that RV park.
The only regulation outside the RV park is how long somebody could actually live in it. And that's for the 30 or 90 days, if they move in town, out of town.
Outside the RV park.
Yes.
Okay.
I think my only question I had to you, if the RV park has designated long-term spots.
Yes.
Do they submit those to you for approval, or you?
Yeah, what, what they would do is, like any other special exception, they would, they would come in and say, these spots in the RV park are the ones that we're going for special exception approval. Then we would look at, at them to see if they meet the, the 300-foot distance, if there's any properties that need buffered away, and then the board of zoning appeals would look at that to see if it meets those criteria for a special exception approval.
But this is saying a maximum of two, two years, and then you're out no matter what?
No, it's to be, every year after that. The language may be tweaked here.
Roy just said two years.
Says prior to the end of the one-year period, a one-year extension may be filed.
Yep.
So it might be helpful to say you can have multiple.
Multiple one-year extensions.
Each year, yeah.
And we may come back in a, in a while and actually make that.
You could extend it a year from time to time.
Or extended annually, rather than a year.
That would make more sense, I don't know that.
And give them a window, 60 days prior to 30 days, you know, if they don't.
When they have to apply.
That, what our purpose, for any, any person that comes in and says we're going to designate spots for the extended stay locations, what we'll do is 60 days before their year would go up, we would mail them out packets for them to refile. The similar process for the tax abatement re-ups that they do on an annual basis, they send everything out, you fill it out, bring it back in, get it approved. That, that's how we're looking at trying to handle that, and that's where the, where the city council landed on what they wanted to see in this matter.
Maybe this is a dumb question, but if somebody's got an RV park, which is for storage of recreational vehicles for storage purposes, why is zoning imposing a shot clock as to how long you can store it there?
Yeah, the ordinance really didn't look at storage inside RV parks, it was about, it was about the long-term residential occupants that are in the RV.
But yet it doesn't say residence.
Correct, it does not.
I guess that's where I was going.
We have, RVs.
If they want to store in a park and they're not living in them, I understand that part.
Yeah, a self, that would almost fall in a different zoning definition for self-storage or warehousing. That is what the U-store type buildings that we have that do that right now go under. So that may fall under a completely different section of the ordinance for where you store it, and especially if they're looking at building a building to store RVs out. I know in Austin, they, they built two buildings designated for RV storage there in the southwest part of town.
If Kevin can store his RV indefinitely on his private property.
Yes, yep.
How, why should putting it in storage in a place that's commercially designed for that be treated just differently?
Yeah, the reason why, the reason the ordinance was written the way it was is because in the specific matter of the KOA facility, the residents wanted to make sure that if they were not in a designated site, that they would have to be removed from the property every eight months, basically. They didn't want units to be moved from one lot to the other and just continually stay inside the facility. They wanted them to come in and come out, so they would have temporary feel to the.
So like a state park, two weeks, come out for two or three days and then come back in.
Yep, and then you could come back in.
Fly here too?
Except this says in a calendar year, so they could come in and then next calendar year, they could, they could do another eight-month stay.
Yeah.
What we saw from looking at other communities, a lot of communities mirror the exact 14-day stay standard from the state over the entire county. And this is, this is definitely a more giving, but we also see these facilities as being a needed type of residence in the county, where people are working here for an extended period of time on a construction project or something of that nature, but when their job is done, they're moving on to the next place of employment. So we're trying to, to balance that whole thing out and provide opportunities for people to stay in RVs during their transient work times, as well as to keep it as an RV park as much as possible.
Yeah, I guess this question that that would be, I mean, in some RV parks, as we all know, they pull them off the site, they take them over and they park them into a confined area generally, and they park those for the winter, and then they bring them back to their site sometimes. I mean, and that, I guess, in the future, if that was ever a case, not to say that is, but I, I mean, if no one's living in it, honestly, I'd rather see it sitting there than on my street.
Sure.
I, yes. I mean, you drive by Jellystone on 30 and you see all those.
Yep.
And you know those have been there a long time, because half of them even have storage buildings.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and that, that is what this ordinance was trying not to create, was a situation where people actually start making these permanent residences and stuff like that. But keeping a balance between a recreational vehicle park and.
I guess I look at when we have mobile home parks and things like that, and this was designed as a campground, and I was trying to have a balance to keep them separate, rather than have this actually turn into an actual mobile home park or trailer type of park.
So this has already been adopted by the city?
City of Bluffton has, and this is inside the city.
Yes, with this exact language, yes. The driver of this ordinance is in corporate limits.
I would have preferred that an RV not be given, an RV may occupy, RVs don't occupy, like it's a physical person. I mean, I would prefer it be, an RV can be occupied for residential purposes, not, but it's already gone through that process.
Yeah, and we can turn around and do tweaks to it in the future as well as once it works its way through and we see results.
How often do we change or bring this up as amendment changes?
We have consistently changed the ordinance about every year, good, bad, or indifferent. So there, there'll be plenty of opportunities to look at anything, whether it was working well, or there's unintended consequences, whatever go on, we have opportunities to look at those.
So other than that small language that you would like changed, you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting to do it just because of me, I mean, if the city's already passed that.
Yep.
I mean, you've got a buffer, I don't, I don't know, people in the audience may have some.
Is there, is there any percentage of spaces allotted that will have this designation? I mean, I don't know how many sites.
No, it's not specified how many.
Is it five or four?
They could ask for as many as they want to, as long as they comply with the 300 feet, and the board of zoning appeals feels that that special exception is warranted. They, the idea was try to be as open-ended as possible, not to be over-regulating anything was partially the goal, but also to get the desired response for all parties at the same time. Trying to resolve that two- or three-year running issue out in that facility, and it actually is, is working its way out rather nicely right now, as we speak, so.
Any other opinions, comments from the audience on this?
No questions?
No question?
You're okay?
I'm listening.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to accept the ordinance, as Bluffton has already approved it from their recommendation, so.
Yeah, I'll second that, but I, I do like Roy's opinion of occupied.
Changing the language if possible, if they're okay with that.
We can make a note of that.
I mean, it doesn't change the meaning, it just checks it.
Yep.
All favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
And just for your information, this ordinance will go in effect sometime.
So Zanesville dropped the zoning out of there?
Just the, the only thing that we changed, or didn't go forward was with the, the part that was outside of the corporate limits, I think, so we could, alone, until development pushes up to change.
Anything else for me while I'm here?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else? Just from what I read in the minutes and in the newspaper article, do you have questions about unsafe building or the health department and abandoned buildings?
I haven't read the newspaper.
All right.
I haven't had any more comment, I just sent out that literature that I got from somebody to you guys right after that.
Monroe County down by Wilmington.
It was a vendor, kind of, yeah, just because it just came in right after we had talked about it, but I've not heard anything more.
On, on that subject of abandoned buildings, I think I previously sent you as an attachment, unsafe, copy of the unsafe building ordinance, and I would just say, if you, if you read the introductory language to that, to the purpose of it, I think it's probably more on point than is the health department where you have to have a nuisance. I think that the, that the standards set out in the unsafe building ordinance, if I, if I were going to go to court, I, you know, they're, they're pretty definite, especially cities, I mean, the city of Bluffton added some real technical terms on that, but, but it's, it's more concrete and definable than just, is this unsafe, or this and that? And I, and I think that it gives you a tool, it's, it isn't a step into adopting a building code. It's just, if there's a problem with unsafe buildings or abandoned buildings, that ordinance, unsafe building statute allows you to issue orders to those proper owners to do things that can ultimately result in, in it being torn down, as opposed to another duty on the health department. And if the question is, who are we going to get to do that, then that's another matter. If it's somebody with some technical ability, my, my thought is, you've already, you already shared some people with the city with respect to animal control, or this and that, and that I don't want to volunteer Ted Smith for another job, but, you know.
I think this is a case-by-case basis, and have the health department bring it to us, is that possible? Is that what you're thinking, or are you thinking something different?
That sounds like.
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily the health department, I think if any concerns citizen reports an abandoned building, that's, I mean, that's, that's your choice, I mean, but it, it would be the, let's see, enforcement authority? I don't know, this, this statutory term, I mean, that would be a.
But we don't need the ordinance in place to create that, or we need the ordinance in place to create that?
Well, I think the, I think you need to, the statute says that a government unit can adopt an unsafe building ordinance, you'd need to adopt an ordinance.
Which is what we were talking about with Chad and all that stuff that we sent around at the beginning.
I think so, yes.
Let me look at it closer before the next meeting, and I'll give you.
Not a problem.
I think I know where we're going, but, well, thank you for researching that, I didn't have a chance of reading this, to get into it.
Yeah?
I'm hoping.
Yeah, you mentioned a couple of minutes ago about checking into the EMA office. There were some complaints that it wasn't open, and which was a, this was probably , you know, I don't know.
I think that was a threat, does there have been any further complaints that you're aware of?
Well, I tried to contact them, figure out by one minute of afternoon, and no one was there, I called.
No sign on the door?
No sign on the door, I think.
We asked him how he's supposed to sign on the door, like, I'll be back at 1:15 or whatever those little clocks are, so.
I called him three times, three of the days, at various times, and he was voicemail.
And no one returned your call?
Did you return, receive a return call?
I had a message, I was trying to, just wondered, but if there's a sign, it's supposed to be posted, so.
Yeah, we, I had to contact immediately after that meeting and ask him if he, if he was going to be called into the field.
Just to get a sign on the door, just say where they are and.
One of those little clock signs and post it on the window, that way people can either get ahold of him, number one, or know when he's coming back into the office.
I'm just wondering.
Okay. There you go. Audience, open to you guys. Well, no comments, means.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, very much.